All right, let's call this meeting to order. This is the Joint Education and Human Services Subcommittee, Town Council, Veterans Room, March twenty-second, six o'clock. Call the meeting to order. Council Katrona is absent. Council Ryan is excused, Council Holly Cristo is excused. I'm just gonna need my two fellow councils to sit in.
If you want, if anything, I was here.
I'm here.
If you need to.
No, that's, no, that's fine.
Okay, all right, gonna go.
All right, so I'm gonna ask Vice Chairman Adams and Council Mark Hedy to sit in. So, this is to review, discuss the Cable Department revised job descriptions. So, what I'm gonna do is, there's three different job descriptions, so I'm gonna have all those under the presentation all together, and then we can take separate agenda, if that's all right, we'll take it separate, so they can talk about it in their package. I guess we'll talk about all three through six as a package
Yeah.
of all the job descriptions of what the process was and all that, and we can take a motion to send that all to the committee. I just think it's easier rather than go through, so. Who's taking the lead on this, Mr. Town Manager?
It'll be me. My memory.
So, yeah.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry, George is already bald as well.
So, I don't know if you heard me. You can join us at the table if you want, Mr. Town Manager. So, there's job descriptions for Cable Production Assistant One, Cable Production Assistant Two, Director and Administrative Assistant. So, what would you like to tell us, Mr. Town Manager?
So, I probably missed what you said, but almost as if this was a consent agenda to try and take it all at once.
Well, what the process was, and then, yeah, because...
So, there's been a couple things. As you know, Ms. Clemmons who was here behind me this evening, she is our lone person on the Cable Leadership Board, and she's been spending time with me, talking to me about functions in the cable operations. We've met and talked about the contract, and as you know, we've had some personnel turnover in cable. Max Goulson, who's been around for quite a while, is gonna be retiring. We've had some turnover on some of our cable operators, so we hired a new person, Lynn Lengel, upstairs, and she's been working as an administrative assistant, doing a very good job by all accounts. And I've met with her in the office, she's very squared away. She's run her own business before, and she was an administrative official at some local colleges, so she's very good at running an office. So, during all of this, it came up that some of the job descriptions, if we're gonna go back out, were not accurately reflecting what people do. The old title grade came under, I believe, Cable Access Coordinators, where the two positions that, for instance, Max and Mark Arben are dealing with are really Cable Production Assistants. So, we wanted to retitle those as Cable Production Assistant Two, for the camera operator, and Cable Production Assistant One for the more advanced with more technical requirements. But Jim...
Editing skills, that's what I said.
Editing, yeah. So, Adriana and Jim and Lynn went through these and updated these to make sure they were using current terminology, as well as ensure that the positions accurately, or the descriptions accurately reflected what people were doing. And there's a little more to what we're gonna talk about this evening, and I can talk about it now, or I can talk about it later. However, the other issue that came up, talking with Ms. Clemmons and talking with the cable staff, is on the current salary schedule, there's only three steps, where every other department in town, all throughout the town, has five steps. And couldn't really find out the rationale behind that. And Ms. Clemmons advocating for the cable staff came and approached me about, you know, could we look into that? And Adriana did look at some other communities, what they were paying, and we felt it would be appropriate to add the other two steps for parity, to bring these folks up and allow them to get the same pay and awards as everybody else does, and recognizing their longevity helps with retention as well, and recruitment. Combined with that, we realized that, you know, looking at people's strengths and weaknesses, I have had a conversation with several of the individual staff members, and I talked to Jim again today, looking at what Jim Cosgrove, he is listed as our Cable Station Manager, and implicit in a manager title is a lot of administrative functions. And, you know, I talked with Jim, and I recognize his strengths are more in the production and the editing, and working with the crew to make sure that we're delivering the product and production that we need. He's also taking on some newer responsibilities with the new equipment that we just purchased, as well as working with the schools to bring up the education channel. And Lynn Lengel, who's currently there as our Administrative Assistant Three, she has more administrative functions and capacity that we're not really tapping into. So, we talked to those folks about changing titles and some of the responsibilities, so that is why you also see the Administrative Assistant Two, which makes some accommodations in there to allow that Administrative Assistant to work on payrolls, invoices, attend certain meetings in lieu of the Station Manager, Production Director, and overlook on the budgets and financial aspects. So, that allows us to tap into Lynn's skills and help a little bit more with the administrative. It expands her role. And then, in essence, by changing Jim's title to the Cable Production Director, he winds up working more in his expertise, which is producing and administering the cable features, as well as the day-to-day operations. There isn't any change in Mr. Cosgrove's step or salary grade, because station manager and production director have the same step grade system, so there's no change there. The only change would be is if we move Ms. Lengel in the next year's budget up, we would be recognizing that she would be taking on some more work, so we would move her to Assistant Two from Assistant Three. So, in a nutshell, we're just trying to bring the job descriptions up to date, recognizing everybody's skills and talents, and making sure as we go out to fill these positions, the job descriptions accurately reflect the work that people would be doing, and that the nomenclature is correct.
Okay. Questions? Council Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Real quick to the Town Manager. The Administrative Assistant Number Two is recommended for an S-seven. What is she at right now? I'm sorry.
She is currently at an S-five. And she recognized and was volunteering to do some of these tasks, but realized, you know, that it's not in her job description. And this is when we realized that there was going to be a change in some of the duties for Mr. Cosgrove. And recognizing Ms. Lengel, who works nineteen hours a week, would like to do a little bit more and take on some of those administrative functions, we figured we could accommodate that by moving her up to an S-seven and giving her some of these enhanced duties. And then now it frees up Mr. Cosgrove to take on some of the new responsibilities he has with our new cloud-based playback system, as well as working to bring up the educational channel and some of the other responsibilities that we've seen evolve recently as a result of COVID remotely, et cetera.
I'm sorry if I missed it, the hours, right now she's got nineteen?
She has nineteen hours, but we may be, we were planning to propose in the FY twenty-three budget to increase her to, up to twenty-five hours.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Ms. Clemmons?
I'll just add to some of what the Town Manager's talked about, because I've been very closely intertwined in a lot of the actual day-to-day at times, not always voluntarily, but, and of course, obviously, in the production stuff that we've been working on together. The one thing I noticed about Lynn, I'll say Lynn because of her first name, is that right off, it was kind of interesting, and she was so, it was, it's hard to even explain, she just had that whole thing together, whether it was a letter, if you asked her to type something, or do something, or produce something, and it was very professional. So, I was very impressed with her skill set when she first came on, and I was really happy to see that, because we were really lacking that type of thing. But as time went on, it got more, it just got more evolved and more developed. But she also did things like step in at times, when there was no camera person one night, my understanding, she stepped up and said, "Sure, I'll help you out." And Jim gave her a couple minutes of lessons, and she was able to help out and work her hours differently to fill in. And I said to her, "We have extra time, make sure you put in, you put in for that time, because, you know, we're lacking people, we have a budget." And in the end, she didn't do that. She actually just worked her hours differently and didn't expect us to give her extra hours for that. So, I'm just saying, she's, I, she's a great asset, and I've watched her professional skills really, she'd be working in the main office, I guess, is what I'd say. Just really impressed with the things that she's done. So, I advocate for her certainly to take on more responsibilities. I think that the office will run definitely more professional and more, just, you know, just evolved from what it is. But on the same token, Jim, you know, he's been here quite some time, and it starts with steps and that type of thing. I pointed that out months ago to the manager, because they had talked about it. They had been putting in a lot of time, as I mentioned to someone, you had, you know, during the COVID situation with the, you know, the different types of meetings and all the extra hours, and not really complaining about it, just saying, "Okay, another meeting, another this, another that," and switched their whole life up to accommodate. So, I advocated for things, and I noticed the steps, and that would be the best way in terms of, you know, helping Mr. Cosgrove get his next level of increases or whatever. And we kind of just, we've been talking about this for months and months, and I think this, what the Town Manager is proposing, it's almost more of a reorg to the whole, you know, it's really a reorg of that cable department. And it needs it, because right now, we are lacking, when Max goes, we have part-time Mark, and that's it. Bill May, who is fantastic, has a full-time job in real life, and he was only dabbling, so we need to have these job descriptions put out there, and hopefully attract some people in here. We've got some creative ways, Lynn's got a few things that she would like to be able to do, reach out to these new job descriptions, and hopefully we can bring back those people, get another full-time person, which is in the budget, and, you know, and then some, we talked about some perky and part-time type people, where whether it's high schoolers or college-type people who are willing to work Monday nights only, say, for meetings, or, you know, put in four, two to four hours or something. There's a lot of creative ways, and the money's in the budget. The money is there from the cable subscribers. And one thing, our license, if I haven't read for reading my licenses, is that we are obligated to provide programming to those people who pay this bill. And the only way to do that is test those people in-house. So, I think the manager went way above and beyond what I'd originally talked to him about, and I think that it's really a very professional way to move forward, and I look forward to working with that person a little bit longer, and hopefully getting more people to be members of some advisory committee that I just advised privately, I guess, I don't know. But anyway, so thank you for consideration and your time, and I really think that what you proposed is a great piece of advocacy there.
Sure. Through you, this, the way you have it written here, the top line, step one, two, three, four, five, that's what you are proposing, and the line before it, minimum one, two, three, and maximum, you're proposing to eliminate? Is that how you're reading this?
I gotta get down to see how it was.
Do what this is.
Are you looking at the bottom line under Section Nine, Cable Access?
Right. Yep.
I think they may have used, I don't know if they used to put the, but where the red line is through is what we'd be adding.
Okay.
It used to just have step one, two, and three as the headings.
All right.
We would be consistent with everybody else, have minimum, step one, step two, step three, and maximum, and the last two columns are, the two rightmost columns would be the new additions.
Right. So, step three and maximum. So, this comes out of the Cable Bill, as Ms. Clemmons said.
Yes.
How are we doing on the Cable negotiations?
I am continuing to work. We get limited responses from Charter. We have had some recent response. We sent them a probably as strongly worded letter as we could. We have limited bargaining power. We did get a response from them, so they decided to reconsider our proposal. They've asked for some additional backup information, and I got that email request today through Charter. So, I've asked Mr. Cosgrove, Ms. Lengel, to gather some additional information about our assessment and ascertainment of needs, which we will send back, so we're continuing to talk with them. But it's only been recently that we've started getting more of a response, and I think it was really because, I'm sorry, cable, our cable council and I had a discussion that, you know, what did we have to lose other than to write this letter? And it really, we took much of our time as we could, so.
Okay. I'm glad that's...
Mr. Manager, on the Schedule Five, right? So, Cable Production Assistant One and Two, where are they, are they, then Cable Access Coordinator, is that gonna be re-titled to that? Is that what that is? Under Cable Access? So, you see, you have the CAC One, which is the Cable Station Manager, Production Director, which I assume is the Cable Production Director. But now, is it just a relabel of Cable Access Coordinator to Production Assistant One, Production Assistant Two?
Yes, and the, they fall under, got that bottom.
They don't fall under that? Where do they fall?
No, there's ones in G forty-nine. But Max is, the position Max is held in Cable Production Assistant One is the CAC Two, which is at the bottom.
Yeah. Now, I'm just wondering, where do they fit on this schedule? Is it a different schedule?
No, no, the very bottom line of the schedule is a CAC Two.
Yeah.
That's the Cable Production Assistant One.
Okay.
Cable Production Assistant Two has a, they were calling it a G forty-nine, that's what it used to be, now that I'm looking, I don't know if that falls.
Yeah, so I just, where would that fall on the schedule? That's all? Because...
I'm gonna have to get an answer to you, because I just...
Yeah, you know, so I agree with the whole makeup, I just wanna make sure that we capture it on the schedule, that you have the Coordinator Director, which is fine, is CAC One, so CAC Two will be your Production Assistant Two. What is Production Assistant One? Where does that fall?
Production Assistant One should fall under the CAC Two step and grade system, which is at that very bottom of that sheet you have. I have to find you where the Production Assistant Two falls, because that's probably an old classification, a G, G as in George forty-nine, and that is not on our current salary schedule, so I don't know what that is.
Yeah, so if you could just have that from Monday night?
Yes, will do.
All right. I appreciate all the work, like Ms. Clemmons said, and Ms. Clemmons said that, you know, that really was a whole look at the whole department and figure out. And while I do appreciate your comments about the individuals and their performance, and really, when I look at these things, it's really, what does the position, does that position hold for that, for the long term? So, if this is how we professionalize that department, it's always been professional, but the job descriptions and when we go out and seek talent, it fits into that. So, did you have some...
Yeah, just on the licensing, so this, the licensing process, which is quote unbridge, or the heated, just being so kind is not to say that technically, spectrum charter, wherever they are, is in breach, but they're not, they're apparently in breach of a lot of towns in Massachusetts, and we're not the only one, it's happening all over the place. I talked to different people from different areas. Not, and it's not reasonable, but they basically have that monopoly, and they're just gonna take their time and do what they want. I do applaud the manager and the legal council, because I think they had some conversations about that whole situation, and they did send a really nice, strong letter, which got at least some motivation. I just, I didn't, I did speak to Senator Patton last week, the end of the week. By the way, I made a comment about that, and he did say, "Let him know if there's something." He apparently helped with another town recently, so I'll mention that too now, which since we're pinching the license. But they have to continue to pay. So, even though, that's the point I really wanted to make, because when you talk about budgets and all, even though they're quote unbridge and all that, they are obligated to continue. The license may be where it's at and overdue, but according to the license, they have to continue what they are currently doing, which is enough to cover what we currently do as an office, as a programming facility. So, that hasn't changed, you know, the monies do come in from the subscribers, so that's still, there's no lack of that. It's not like they're in breach and not paying us either, so that they are obligated to pay.
So, any other discussion on the job descriptions? So, I'm looking to just have one motion, because I think for items three, four, five, and six, they're not really revised job descriptions, right? They're new job descriptions, correct? Because you're just, you're re-titling and all that, so if...
Yeah, I can make a motion if you want me to make a motion.
Do you understand what I'm trying to say? So, it's not really revised job descriptions, it's vote to recommend the council approve the reorganization of the cable, cable...
Access.
Access, cable access operations, and approve the job descriptions of Cable Production Assistant One, Assistant Two, Production Director, and Administrative Assistant Two. Does that make sense?
Cable Access Department.
Yeah, Cable Access Department.
Cable Access Department? I just wanna put it down so I can send it to the board.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's also a self-security TV. I'm really not sure I asked.
Okay.
Vote to approve Cable Access Department?
Yeah.
And approve...
The job descriptions for Cable Production Assistant One, Assistant Two, Production Director, and Administrative Assistant Two.
Administrative Assistant Two.
Is there an Administrative Assistant One job description already in place? Or is it really that you're...
It goes in reverse, or three is more the entry level, two is the midpoint, and one is the top. I don't know if we've reached that.
Okay. Is there an Administrative Assistant Three job description already?
There should be, because we hired Ms. Lengel currently.
Okay. Okay. So, we have a motion, a second? All right, any further discussion on that? You all good with that, Councilman?
Yeah, you know, I'll send her...
Yeah, all in favor? The recommend? All right. And then seven, motion to recommend council approve the changes to Schedule One. Is it Schedule One or Schedule Five? Is that Schedule?
Schedule One.
Is it Schedule One? No, I just want to make sure. It is Schedule?
Schedule One, yeah.
Okay, Schedule.
Why does that get nine?
It's section...
Section nine.
Oh, it's very...
But he needs to keep the...
Yeah. Yeah. Right. But what recommend, to council approve? Is there a motion on that?
First, uh...
Second.
Yeah.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? And then resolved? All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Manager, on that. All right, now we have reviewed, discussed Town Manager recommendation to change Recreation Director position from part-time to full-time to take any action. Is there a motion?
So...
Second? Okay, Mr. Town Manager?
Good evening, again, Mr. Chairman. What essentially we're trying to do here, Mr. Brunell's here this evening, he came on his own, I didn't necessarily ask him to come, but everybody's welcome to come. I, again, I know we don't always like to talk about the person, we talk about the position, but from memory indication, and from what I've seen in my communication with Mr. Brunell, he did a good job at the town, an excellent job. And a couple people have come to me about his position, and it came up during the budget cycle, that I wasn't keenly aware of, that there is no step system for our Recreation Director. And I know it's in here someplace, I wasn't able to get you the backup information, but right now, there is just a rate for Recreation Director, there is no upward mobility, and again, for parity purposes, and, you know, when you find a good employee and you want them to stay with you, you want to ensure you have a mechanism for retention. So, not having a step system puts us at a disadvantage relative to other communities that might want to bring someone on. We want to be competitive. So, separate and apart from that, we may be putting into the FY twenty-three budget a request to increase his hours. My primary function here would be, this evening, I have an email from Ms. Rubena, which I can circulate with you folks and get it to you for Monday's meeting, but we want to create the additional steps, so that he has a five-step system. Ms. Rubena said it would be very similar to the step that you see under an F-ten right now, that it would have the same increase, annual increase percentages that the steps in the S-ten, based on his current salary, and it would go up that way. I just do not have something in the pack or with me. Tried to print it up before I get down here, we had another meeting, and I'm late. But what we would be proposing at Monday night's meeting is to establish steps for the Recreation Director, so that we are competitive and can retain our employees, just as we're looking to do so with the Cable Department. So, it would increase between the steps at the same, roughly the same rate as all the other steps do, which is, I believe, a point zero five increase year over year, and that is augmented by any type of coal that may begin, but that is dependent year-on-year on what the budget dictates.
So, at this point, it's just really getting the steps on board, and then during budget, we'll talk about the overall hours and position?
Right, as, I'm sure you're aware, we were asked to look at a couple of positions. We're looking at an oversight position at DPW, because of the departure of Mr. Conroy, who handled our IT, we're looking at an IT person. But one of the other adjustments that we are considering is adding hours to our part-time Recreation Direction, which would effectively make him a full-time. Anytime you increase beyond twenty hours, employees are considered full-time.
Right. Mr. Chair?
Part of the reason for coming tonight's meeting was to listen to cable and also the recreation. Those are two departments that are not, they don't get the accolades that they so deserve. You know, the Cable Department has been doing some great work, and Recreation Department, I was on the Recreation Committee for a number of years, going back fifteen, maybe twenty years ago, and we had a part-time person that every year, the manager said we were gonna make him full-time, full-time, and to be able to get those steps that they talked about, because it was just a set salary schedule, and that person oversaw Little Lee, he helped establish the summer recreation program that we brought back with Mike Vesha being the coordinator for that. We were also able to, eventually, I believe, got fifty thousand dollars from council and budget, and he was able to run programs at the school during school week, that was closed for the schools, the vacation weeks, and they had school dances up there, they had some basketball programs that they did, because we felt the importance, so these kids had nothing to do. When Little Lee got done, that was it, at the fields. The person also would go around the fields at night on his own to kind of check what's going on with the fields and that kind of stuff. They, he also worked with, I believe, the kids program originated with the program that started at Chestnut Street, to the old, where Monkeys is today, and they had a, who I believe was a full-time person, I remember, and they did after-school programs, they did, you know, it was a really success, and then it kind of all fell apart. And now we have a very, very limited intake that he's doing the best he can with what he has. And now we have a very, very limited take that he's doing the best he can with what he has. Recreation is very important, I think, to you, keeps them busy, keeps them out of trouble. And, you know, it's just like the Pop Warner, the Pop Warner program, at one time it was a great program. The schools looked into it for the kids, for guidances, for behavioral issues and stuff like that. Back when Paul Powers and Scott was in there, they had a problem kid in school, they'd call up the coach. Otherwise, the kid wasn't playing football. So recreations are very important. And it shouldn't just end start of the summer and end of the summer like this Cops for Kids program. I think if you've got a full-time person, I didn't realize that it was just talking about the steps tonight, but I really hope council considers a full-time person with the recreation director so he could, you know, move the town forward with recreation. And the committee was important back then, with myself, Dave Chivinsky, George Carmel, Joe Baum, and I forget, there was one other person. And we used to fight like heck, but we brought back, we originated the concerts on the common back then. We got all that money raised, as they still do today. So I think having a full-time director will be a good benefit to the community and the town in itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess since I've been here on the town council since July of 2018, we've seen nothing but issues with the recreation director's position itself and some of the other things that came along with it, from the bylaws disappearing that the town council had approved, to re-put those bylaws back into the system. And now we've gone through, I think, a couple rec directors, part-time, and now we have Michael in that position. But being 19 hours a week, a town like this size needs to actually have somebody that's gonna spend a lot more time than 19 hours a week to ensure that the programs, the games, and all that kind of stuff, the fields are all taken care of. Spend a little bit more love on some of those fields as well, working with the DPW. I think bringing in a full-time position will also open the doors for other possibilities within the town, getting funds from other places and helping out. I just don't, I believe if we continue to keep this as a part-time position, I think, oh, it's gonna be a rotating door, it's never gonna get off the ground, you're not gonna have anything stable like you haven't had for a few years now. And I highly recommend that the position itself become a full-time position. And then working from that point on, I don't know how that would fall under the community center or the community director or anything like that, but the fact is, that position is very vital to the town, just like the senior citizens, the senior center would be to other organizations that we have in town that are supporting the community itself. That, you know, his position, those young moms and dads are gonna be the first ones they talk to. And I think that's real important for this community to continue to grow and stabilize. And, you know, I just think it's just important for this town, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, Michael.
Thank you, through you. I was just curious, what does the recreation director do? What plans does he have for the summer?
I can speak on that behalf if you'd like.
I know he's doing theme concerts and a few other things.
Yes, actually, I can, I'll go into it a little bit if I can argue for the department itself. I think full-time, considering that, is a great idea, especially like Counselor Adams said. Just the size of the town, of population, and the amount of parks. There's really no town surrounding us that has as many parks, in just areas for recreation. Investing in recreation is obviously reinvesting into the community. It's gonna get people to come out here, to stay, convince them to continue to grow their families here. So full-time would be ideal, because I think that represents community and exercise and health and getting the youth involved. Like I said, full-time's ideal, but 19 hours is actually impossible at some points. So as you mentioned, I think, I, I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
George.
George. That there is a lot to be done in the summer, but it kind of seems that the programs go dormant. In the summertime, there's actually not enough time in the allotted hours. So I'm doing the recreation, the summer recreation program for the kids. That includes supervising high school students to supervise those children. Their position is 20 hours of supervising, a 19-hour-a-week supervising. So technically, I'm one hour over already. The concerts on the common, which I was able to pull together last year in a month's time, I've booked almost all of them now this year. There'll be eight, so two months' worth of Sunday concerts. Much of those overlap with that, and that's three hours of the weekend. So that's technically 22 hours of a 19-hour week. Some already going over. And then with recreation, you try to plan a season ahead. So with that, fall would inevitably suffer, because I wouldn't be able to plan programming in the fall time, well, for fall time and summertime. I do have a activities calendar for the spring that I was able to put together this year. So for seven weeks.
You got it at home?
Oh, you got it?
I was away, too.
Oh, nice. So for seven weeks of the spring, you'll be able to go and do something.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, this is based off of other departments, I'm not reinventing the wheel or anything, but they are departments that normally run with at least one full-time staff for recreation, similar towns. And essentially, just a 19-hour week, that's, if I go into work five days, that's less than four hours per day.
Can I make a mention real quick, Mr. Chair?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut off.
No, it's fine.
This question.
I can come back.
I do wanna, I just wanna throw in there real quick, just recently, the handball association, who does their tournaments outside every summer, spring to the fall. They recently just addressed us again the other day about what a one-wall handball court inside the community center. One discussion I had with Pat, Mike, and a few others was, how many hours is this gonna take? And then trying to find the volunteer times, the volunteers to actually do something. So if they don't have the volunteers, and the volunteer system is not set up properly, you're talking about recreation, you're talking about Mike having to spend two, three hours each time they meet, and if it's approved, out of his workday. So to be there to make sure the community center is open as well. So I apologize, Mr. Chair, if I just jumped in, I just wanted to throw that in there, because this is the last minute.
No, I appreciate it.
But you said that you had like some recreation, youth recreation, I was just wondering what exactly is?
Yes, so there's gonna be a summer, basically a summer day camp. That's been the staple of this program, actually, for the job description of the recreation position when I applied. That was one of the only staple activities that they had. That and the concerts on the common, of course.
The other question I had is, is he going to have a budget? Because I can't imagine just having a rec director without a budget. And I would think he would need some money to fix up the fields. Fields really need some work sometimes.
I believe that he falls under the community center with Ms. Haddock. That's where you have been appearing at the moment. I believe there's a salary line, I don't have it committed to memory, and I believe there is some expenditures. But he, I would imagine if he had more hours and more options, we would happily evaluate what his expenses would be if there was more programs. But overall, I think the return that we get, based on the amount that we spent for his current expenses, well as his salary, we're getting a lot of bang for the buck. And, you know, first and foremost, and regardless of whether we make it full-time, I do think, even if he were to stay part-time, if you have somebody coming back year-over-year, you should, you know, create that incentive for them to come back and want to be part of the town. So that's one thing, so that's why we want to do the steps. But if we realize and recognize that there is a need for somebody, then I think we should consider making it full-time. And I've received that suggestion from numerous sources, so that is why we will try and work it into the budget presentation next week.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, just, also, under the recreation director, back when we had the committee back, you have to say, many years ago, the recreation director didn't just do the programs, they oversaw the fields with Little Lee, the event boards that break out between the teams and that kind of stuff for the use of the fields. And we had Henry Street, West Street, and Morris Street. Morris Street used to be for T-ball, I don't know if it's still set up that way. But he was the overseer of those fields. The softball association, that is a Southbridge field, and he used to oversee the record down there, because it was always priority that school sports and stuff would have a use of that facility in the event of playoffs, things like that. And the softball association felt and feels that that's their field, and he used to be the middle person, and they'd go, okay, look at the high school girls are coming down here, we need to have this week, cancel your games. And then he also made, you know, some arrangements, we used to have the football, we used to battle with the football, Pop Warner football at West Street, because it was a field, you know, a lot of it, messing up the field and that kind of stuff. So we worked with recreation committee, and at one point, they went up to the airport to do some practicing. So not only did he run the programs, but he was also that middle person for the town to go to DPW, keep peace amongst everything. He paid the bills, we used to pay the bills for the old young pines. That person would do the laundry and pay the bills. Now, it still isn't just a matter of running the programs, but was also overseeing all of our facilities. And he didn't get much for 20 hours a week back then, and, you know.
All right. I'll go ahead, thanks. Counsel.
Those are good points, and I know there was a whole rec committee at one time, too, that actually teamed with that, which was nice. And again, it's hard to get volunteers, you know, case in point. But I would like something addressed in the rec side of it. You know, for years now, the community center, let's use the community center, has, you know, you have a lot of pay-for programs, there are a lot of people using it for practices, other out-of-town groups and stuff, they pay to use that. And that's nice, right? We get money. However, it has been brought to my attention numerous times over the last few years, especially, more so than ever, that there are things that we can't, local things cannot be done, local groups cannot utilize, play some basketball in the winter or whatever, because they're taken up by all the pay people. Which is nice, to have pay people, but it's a community, our community center. And why are we not advocating for our own youth groups, i.e., for instance, some of the Cops for Kids type group, parts of their group who would get together in the winter months to try to play basketball and all, and sometimes would use the schools, but then that's changed. And then could use the Y, less you're paying, but everything is a pay-for-pay-for. Well, sometimes these programs don't have pay-for-pay-for money, and yet there are own community programs that have got nowhere to actually hold their own community event, or their own community activity. So I would just like, in your job, to add one more hack, would be to review the policies, or review what we do, and maybe even make recommendations, or not, whatever, but at least be mindful of the fact that there are groups out there that are in this community that love the opportunity to use our community center for free, for a community, you know, a function of sorts. And most time, yes, people pay to rent that place, that's great, but we never have any time available for the community, the other served portions of our community. What good is a community center, let's not call it that then, let's call it something else, because then it's not a community center. So something to think about, and just asking that you do that, evaluate what's going on.
All right, so for the purposes of tonight's discussion, we had the recommendations just changed, the position. So I guess we'll postpone that to the budget, to wait the budget. But I have no problem with this salary schedule going up, because we're gonna do the salary schedule for cable. We might as well, if you want to get that onto the same scale, where it would fit on this schedule? If that's okay.
We will amend it.
With, you know? Just as a recommendation, just to put it up and.
Just come over the new agenda.
Yeah, I would just, I would just say, we, all we have, we're vetting subcommittee. If we direct the town manager and we're in agreement that, we talked about it on EHS, and he can just put an agenda item on the full council.
You're just changing this stuff.
Counsel Lazo?
Mr. Chairman, on the recreation director, I wouldn't want to piecemeal it. I think this position needs to be looked at holistically. A lot of great questions tonight, what do they do? I've experienced some great things with past recreation directors in coordinating building use and field use and that type of stuff. I'm not against anything that we're talking about, the only thing I'm saying is, if he's gonna be a full-time position, let's vote to make it a full-time position. At the same time, if the step increase is gonna be part of it, maybe we have to look at it as the whole picture, instead of just, are we voting the steps just for the position that's existing? Or are we gonna rewrite what we, how we do recreation? To me, looking at it holistically is a better approach as far as accomplishing what I think we really want. I think right now, what we're gonna do is we're gonna put a piece to it and come back and put a couple more pieces to it, when I'm saying, bite the bullet, let's look at it holistically and draw this up the way we want to do it. I personally believe a full-time rec director, I understand finances are tight, I understand a lot of money being spent on. But the rec director, I mean, we have a lot more going on, we have adult touch football, we have, you know, we have Pop Warner, we have Little Lee, we have all kinds of sports. I'm not saying he runs them, but he needs to be the connector to the presidents of these organizations on how it works, where they go, and what's expected. I don't know how many times I got a phone call on this adult touch league use of fields, or the alumni use of fields on the alumni gate. And I think as a rec director, the phone is there, and there's a man on the other side of the line, could solve a lot of problems and streamline a lot of this recreation that's constantly coming over. And with the handball court and all this other stuff that, you know, we're creating, it's all good stuff. I just think this gentleman in front of us needs a holistic look, not a piece of it.
So, is the rec director already on that schedule? No, right? He's not on schedule one?
I think he may be on the schedule of five.
All right, so I would be inclined to agree with Counsel Lazo, because any step increase wouldn't be until we get into the new budget anyway. So why don't we have the whole job description, full-time position, where it would fit on the salary schedule, and have it all part of the regular budget?
Okay, so we table this right now?
I would, I would, I would, yeah, I would, yeah, we'll just postpone it to a future EHS budget discussion, whenever the budget comes up for EHS, because his department's gonna have to come to us for EHS. So we'll just postpone it to the budget, that's all. And make it part of the budget discussion. But it's all great points, so thank you, Counsel Lazo. All right. So the budget discussions, Mr. Manager, because that's it for that, so we'll, well, all in favor of postponing to the future EHS budget discussion?
I would say make it a full-time tonight.
Yeah, yeah. We are just.
No, I'm, motion was postponed.
Postpone, yeah, to the, to the, to EHS budget.
Budget presentations.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Served.
To the budget discussions, do we have dates set up for any of those subcommittee nights yet, for those?
I believe Nora may be working on those.
Okay. So if you could just ask her to reach out to Bay Path to see when they're available? And we can probably do Bay Path and rec department on the same night.
Yeah, Bay Path is contacting me right.
I would, I would.
Probably wouldn't be till the first week of May.
Okay, I would leave.
I think April.
I would leave the Southbridge Public Schools for just one night of EHS, because I'm sure that's gonna be a long discussion.
All right, Mr. Chair, you know, I talked to Karen already about, you know, just.
Yeah.
Looking at dates for the subcommittee, she's already on it.
Yeah, no, I'm sure, I'm just.
Yeah.
Anything further? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor? Thank you.